The surrender prayer, God grant me surrender to accept the things I cannot change. The courage to change the things I can and the wisdom to know the difference. Let's first lead us here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the red light, which stands by my nation, by your God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
And I still believe that I pledge a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others of their viewpoints. And finding solutions for the benefit of my city or town. Thank you.
Thank you folks. I pledge the call of the committee of the planning commission on November seventeenth. Twenty twenty five of the order. I am David Ospel, uh. The chair, uh, to my left is Jay Wright, who is the most here, but then we casino and James Gardner, both. Good members of our committee and on the other side of Jeff, I'll be back when we golfing expedition. Uh, with this side, we have our new planner. There, oh, our whole power or O'Hara, O'Hara, so you're not truly Boston, okay. Rico Gianni, who's uh, maybe on his last meeting here, um, so we wish you best. Uh, we have our secretary, he white and as a guest, our administrator, after about this. Meeting spokes. I have the minutes from our last meeting, so.
Go ahead, just one point of clarification uh, for the agenda, the. F B vested rights draft ordinance, that ordinance in its language is still pending legal review, so there is no draft. Uh, version for your review or vote tonight. Um, so I would just like to preface that no motion should be taken on that language.
It will be a motion, but it will be comment. Great, alright, uh, I have a, uh. Everybody looked at the minutes, anybody have any correction, suggestions or otherwise? Pretty good to me, I have a motion to say.
To.
Second. All of favor.
Uh-huh.
My show pounds. Dan, could you do your timekeeper thing? Sir, explain it to the audience. We have twenty-five minutes, uh, if you wish to use it all, each speaker has two, two minutes to speak, please go directly to the points. Uh, no individual can speak for the second time unless everybody else has had the opportunity to speak. And Dan will be our timekeeper and microphone is yours.
When you request, please state your name and your address for the record. I knew you just pushed that button down, so yes, there, thank you.
Andrea Fraser, seventy-eight fifty-four, Volbe Drive, Aldo, North York, New York. Um, and I would like to have my words recorded in the actual movement, so that they adjust my name statement. So I have two questions for the council, uh, or here, planning commission here. I'm concerned about the vested rights on this property, TMS zero six, 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 one, zero, 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 two, nine. It looks like it was moved from uh, a TC to a PD on nine four, two thousand fourteen. That's been slow, so over eleven years. I know that the vested is five years and with um. Covid extended it for an initial two, so is there something, documents that are available that show that if these people have vested rights? Or not, um, just to what I've been able to pull off. The website or planning ordinances, that that vested rights have expired from this. Also, if we are discussing this tonight here in planning meetings, um, concerns about why I was sent to council for our first reading last, last month, for the month of November. Um, those are two concerns that I have and after reading it. I'd also like to make a recommendation for planning that under sidelighting. I know that we are not currently a dark sky town, but I do think the part is evaluating that and pursuing it, that's a possibility. So on seven point zero. On V, all dance show up color range from twenty-seven hundred K to thirty-five hundred K. And that's in excess of the dark sky permitted lighting, it should all, excuse me, all be under three thousand ten. Um, they also recommend dimmers, timers or motion sensors to keep that lighting in down.
There you turn. Thank you very much. Next. But I don't see one. Alright. Andrea, if you would like to continue, no one else speaks, so you can hit the return.
Seventy-eight fifty-four, Volbe Drive, Andrea Fraser. Um, considering with the lighting, um, the flip candles that are in, in, in I D. Those are not compliant since they're not shielded, I would also like to have planning review those when plans actually come through. Um. They should not be any higher lighting reflected other than for a sound. We'll move on. To density on the last page edits here, I know it's a seven point two one acre lot. Um, the last sentence says residential density shall not exceed a gross density of four units per acre or ten units. So. I'm assuming that they're going to be quarter acre lots and there will be ten, ten, ten lots, is that what's in the plan? There's no P D of that. I'm to read me them.
Thank you.
All I have for now.
Alright. Alright, let's get on to the, this. Plan development that, um. I had initially thought was vested, at least for conversation, it's almost weeks ago, and uh. It apparently uh, is not, uh, Matt, you were on this?
Yes, sir, so the, uh, owner of this property reached out about vested rights, the term extension letter. The three of us sitting here ran the analysis on the timeframe and everything and their request for an extension did not come in until like. Two and a half years after it was originally approved, they needed to request their extension within that initial two-year period. As such, their vesting period expired, this went to city council, the first reading, um. Last month. And so the pending ordinance doctor is now in play, so that if they do submit plans, they're not gonna, they won't receive the benefit at the time of application rule. So it's coming back, the planning commission now for recommendation and we'll go back to city council for second finally.
If you go to council.
For under the pending ordinance doctor, and so this body, when it's reviewing ordinances, sits in a recommendation capacity.
Yes.
And under the case law, in order for the pending ordinance doctor to apply, it's gotta go through first reading public hearing council, which it already did. So now if they submitted applications after that first reading, we would say, no, we're in the process of admitting the PD back to plan. But if we didn't do that and it just came to this body first and they submitted an application, we would be, we would have to. They would be operating under the old PD prior to these. So makes sense?
Uh, I hope so. Uh, it didn't make a hundred percent sense to me, um, so they had this opportunity to build under this plan development. And. Has it expired or, or, or what is exactly has happened? Uh, what was the, the timeline of this as written, I didn't notice it, um, and at some point does it? Dissolve or does, I guess it could, because it's a zoning, it stays that zone. We just need to figure out how to work within that zone, what was their attempt at the two and a half year mark, what were they trying to do exactly?
They were just trying to extend what they already have. But it had expired and so we go then and then through it from a planning perspective, like eliminated multifamily, because that didn't make sense with setting. And made other sort of planning changes, ultimately when it goes to council, or this body may recommend additional changes to it. The plan is, we're gonna reach out to the developer too, to let them know, hey, this is being amended at this point, y'all have been, does the developer have feedback or want to work with the town? So you wanted to get this body's recommendations first.
Also, there's, and there was also distinction like, you know, the sense of PD is a rezoning and a text amendment. So like the, there's like zoning, you can copy the zone PD, but the PD document is, you know, like a test.
Sure.
Like having.
And had they caught it two years, it could have gone on for another extended period of time, exactly like it was, but because they missed that opportunity, this is our opportunity to better it for us.
For our existing without, and potentially for them too. And there's like, I'm fishing, I know, so maybe they're, because they kind of describing them. You didn't start anything like that, right?
Yeah, we didn't like, so the, the other thing, yeah, the other thing that I wanted, that I brought up for Rico is like typically the way we deal with these are exactly what we're doing here, which is where we're gonna. Fine tune in, make a better document for the town, you know, reach out to the developer, see if they have any changes. Like arguably, we could just say, look, your PD inspired rezoning, you agricultural or conservation. That's a major down zoning and we're probably gonna end up in litigation, and not, not to say that they would win, but they're likely to will be all suited results, which is why we're taking. Sort of a, you can still do generally what you did, but we think there are some bad ideas in here that we're fixing.
Can we say anything about that density?
Um.
You say, yeah, I'm gonna ultimately recommend whatever you want to.
May, you'll have recommended that we downgrade the density from seventy-five, thirty-five, correct, right?
Just the imper, I had a comment about the previous coverage, so I'll get to my report, but I just, uh, thank you, Mac, I just wanted to make sure that like, the, the commission knew that like. You didn't wanna like completely eliminate their development rights because then potentially, but again, this is a recommendation by, you know, your comments would carry for council and they're have the full ultimate decision.
I was talking about the. The, the previous service was a lot. Coverage, I'm saying, but it's, it's two and a half acres.
It's, I think, seven point two one is the gross acreage, and I think it's, there's like five and some acres of like, I would consider highland, should have mentioned, uh, developed. So, and that's why they mentioned gross acreage on here, because I guess they're, you know, they're including the entire area.
So if we were to rat them only, but three thousand square foot lots. Which is basically the agricultural zoning. Uh. That would be in a. Five divided by, and, you know, well, would that be about seven, seven lots maximum, right?
Yeah, so.
Can we do that?
It could be a recommendation, this is all, could be a recommendation to council, so. I mean, if it's, you know, if it's the privilege of the, of the commission, yes, you could make, make that request to council.
And we, these are what Rico's done and, you know, when he gets it before, he even got it explained from a planning perspective, the tweaks he made and then. Y'all can agree with those, y'all can disagree with those, and come up with a lot of those changes for council to be silver, yeah.
So, um, I'll, and I won't read this verbatim, but I'll just kind of get the highlights of this. Um, as Matt mentioned, um, and for the permitted uses in two point O, just removing language for the whole family, because we don't have sewer infrastructure, makes it pretty feasible. And also kind of contradictory to the conference plan, um. Four point O building setbacks, there were some interesting math or, you know, or at least math that wasn't clear to me about the composition or. The composition of the front setback, so I've laid out two options. Um, either, you know, retain a, you know, thirty-five split setback that's inclusive on the required buffer utility placement and these grading areas that were mentioned. Um, or opt, option B, increase it to forty-five feet to be, you know, include the, those, those mentioned, the easement and the line state buffer. Um, you know, up to the commission, just, um. Any motion of recommendation, just include one of those options. Um, and then additionally, staff recommends implementing an internal site setbacks of fifteen feet to support consistency, so. Um, signage, uh. It states that this signage has to be approved by the planning commission. And because of the big cumbersome, you know, to, you know, remove this requirement, so it's consistent with just the regular sign ordinance in the town. Uh, for the density. Uh, they propose an existing lot coverage of seventy-five percent. Um, and for me's coverage. Which is high, high generally for the town, uh, so I recommend that, you know. There's thirty-five percent coverage with residential, which is consistent with residential and even as a similar or slightly higher for commercial, like maybe a forty-five percent or. Even a fifty, like maybe a fifty-five percent of commercial understanding, but those can be, um. Different characteristics there. Uh, lastly, the removal of the, the FAR language, I just don't think it's like the right place to stop, and I think it's more confusing when you're. I think it's just, it just, it's more confusing than ever, it's, um, usually you see this kind of language in bigger cities that have a lot of them, so I just don't think that's the right place to that. And, um. Also, just as a final comment, I do like the recommendation of the dark skies ordinance and limiting the wattage on the lighting. And shielding and directing the light and then also adding so maybe some. Where you could potentially say some, some photometric plans to limit the foot candle trespass at the property line, so I like that recommendation.
I don't see it here anywhere, uh, hyper far. Did you hear, were some of those about?
And we're anxious for that to send. The density is four units per acre.
Why do you require patience, should we just have a motion on the floor to open up discussion with this item?
So move.
Second. All in.
Uh.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's, I got.
So you say there's about five acres of uplands.
Well, don't show.
More than one seven.
Uh, I didn't. It's.
I say.
Yep. Um.
So do you assume twenty percent for roads and that type of things? Um. That leaves you. Um, three, three point seven five acres.
Yeah, so the two point O, you know, four point seven acres adjacent to highway seventy-one is intended for commercial office and then the rear. Site two point five one will be, you know, that's residential, so, um, because there is that. There's a couple, you know, there's a couple of zoning classifications in the, so when we're looking at the density or previous coverage, we could use those acreage. Four point seven or two point five one. Because it, because it also, look, it also mentions gross, so just, yeah. Like gross density.
Um, for if there's for, for units per acre, we're also talking about four seconds per acre, correct? Mr. Hardy. I haven't checked in yet. Also. No.
I have a couple of questions, um. Where. So Rico, in your staff report, you mentioned a, a grading area, where is, I didn't see that in PD.
It is mentioned in text only, um, and I'm not really sure what that's referring to.
And because I saw where it says great, the only thing I saw was grading is not allowing bumpers.
Yeah.
But I didn't, I didn't notice a ten feet anywhere.
In that actual.
Is that something that's shared on the plan, not in text?
Um, you know, I think it's, it's on the original PDF, I'm not in this word, my red line document.
Uh, okay.
Um. Definitely. So, yeah. We can pull it up.
Wow.
Is this, um. Oh, flat available for us to look at?
There's no proposed flat, no zoning permit or preliminary plan has been submitted to staff, but it's developed.
So there's no site plan that came with PD, you know that?
Hey, there's a, if I recall correctly, there's a very like limited concept.
Um, my other, I don't have a question, I just have a comment, uh, under two point air description permitted uses. There's commercial uses listed in residential and the last thing listed under residential. Is any use is not specifically listed here and subject to approval by the planning commission. One, I think that would just apply to residential uses because of the way that it's formatted. Not sure that was the intent, uh, because they had listed. Basically any residential use, but in general. I have a concern with that, there's no criteria for the planning commission to use to make that determination, so I would, I would recommend that we strike that provision.
I personally don't have enough information to make a judgment at all.
Without, without a, without a slide plan, I think, how, how we.
That will ultimately come back to us, woman.
Yeah. Yeah, well, like this is sort of the parameters of what they can develop and ultimately when they go to develop that. A plan or a plaque will come before site plan or a plaque they come. For this body for proof.
And one. What laws are they, ordinances are they gonna be subject to?
This time, this is zoning ordinance, which y'all are working on right now.
Yeah, we're working on, so we. So if. Our entire decision review is gonna be on plan developments, we're grinding out a plan development for nationally, that's it, it's the most important thing we have to do. Uh, until we have some semblance of what we're gonna do, I don't, I don't know what to do with this question.
So the, this would, that would address the amended PD ordinance would address then anything new coming in, this is an existing, we are, this is already zone. PD, an existing expired PD that we have to just work, you know, we're working to make it fit better. Because we have, yeah, we have adopted the new conference of plan, so this is our, actually one of the. You know, there's a lot of stuff, there, there may be, you know, a couple of key dogs out there, we've seen some that have been vested and it's seemingly that our hands are tied, you know, this is an existing PD that we can. Alter and make it more in alignment with the conference of plan, so with this one, we do have say, and like Matt said, this is their government tax, this is the zoning ordinance that comes with their PD. Um, and so this is how it will be administered, so if we. You know. As we're recommending to council, if we see anything in here that needs to be changed, yeah, now is a great time to. So what I mean is like. Yeah, what I mean is that the PD ordinance is just great, but it won't affect anything like, because this is.
Excesses to portion.
Yeah. Right, so.
Well, it's kind of hard to represent and what we're gonna do in council, we don't consider you.
When we, uh, send it back to the drawing board, so to speak, and tell them reduce the density.
You can sort of make a recommendation to council, yeah.
Or we could just reduce it as, as we write it, right in here, not repeat the reduction. Then saying. I think the list of concerns that you have can all be compiled and recommendations for council. And that's, I think that's, I mean, that's how any change is gonna be recommended, all, all of staff changes are just recommendations to council.
Right.
Um, so I think, I think that would be a good thing if we're compiling the densities certified and all that stuff.
I share the concerns that Marry brought up, but I would also say. Let's tell them that one commercial building and five lots would be more than enough on this piece, so I'm.
Yeah, I mean, four. Potential four, those such units per acre, that's. Such a poor regular law for subjects, that just doesn't work. And we. We've picked that issue for a while.
Install recalcited enormous commercial second system.
What's that?
Install recalcited as enormous commercial.
Well, we don't even know whether it is that a water dependent business, whether it, whether it's in there, if, if, you know, could, could have one bath and that's the automatic. If it's water, then it's like a business, then.
It's just residential.
Well, we're, that's next door, commercial, commercial, yeah.
Uh, um, one thing that I remember from when this first came through was that, um, I don't think everybody will know the idea of one more minister with your bodies in all of them. I would like to see us take that first usage off of the list, is that something that we have to need review to do? Just to remove one, uh, eight, one self-storage facility?
Oh, it is a self storage.
Yeah, I sure said go on the self-storage facility where it's at our town hall. And I know that it got passed last time, I know that I was here, I don't remember exactly how that went, but I think some people were more for it than others than. Is that something that we can nix and suggest to council outside of?
Whatever the majority of this body wants to recommend, they'll have to recommend, so this is unlike, like last time when y'all had an approved vested PD, you got a site plan. You were stuck with kind of approving it in the parameters of that BD.
Right.
Y'all have sort of a clean slate to amend this or make recommendations, how are you like?
I don't know that it would be well deceived, given that the name of your positions is all in those storage, but I would like to see that go over.
Okay, so. So here it says seven lots, there's one commercial and six. But how did they come up with that four, five per acre?
That makes sense.
Yeah. Yet it comes back to how are we gonna make their conditions, we don't understand what's happening with this one. I'd love to make their faces much, uh, a lot, it's like. One, one unit per acre or so on and so forth, but I don't know.
I think this we can do that.
Yeah, so PD is like, just like a plan, you probably understand this, but a plan development is sort of like customized, I mean, so. And typically you work with the developer on these types of things, this obviously was something that was worked out and agreed to by the town in twenty nineteen. It's no longer vested, so staff has made certain change recommendations, but this body can recommend, they can all get. Reduce density, you could add density, you can eliminate self-storage, you can change the lighting, you can change the requirements for lighting, all that stuff, just want to take that. Or you can make no recommendations, send it to city council and they may change it.
So. Well. Um. I have respect for city council, but the expertise in planning is here. Including two Ivy P consultants who are part of us, so. Um, I don't think that would be fair.
Always making notes of what we've got so far, I can see, um, what else would anybody like to see other than what we've. Already.
Would be asked to their increased densities, mainly, and too many statistics in there.
Yeah, we, we go on that. And so. Maybe we can, let Kelly, we can give her notes and then she can read off when she's down, and see if we all agree with adding that to staff recommendations, it sounds like a viable option for motion.
How are you feeling, Kelly, about one time? So, we need another meeting before you, some other.
No, I mean, I've got a list of what we've talked about before, I think the only question that there seems to be is how to. Recommend revising the density optimization.
And then.
So we've got, we've got in previous coverages proposed by staff be reduced. From seventy-five percent to forty-five percent for commercial, thirty-five percent for residential, and then further limits residential density. To four units per acre for ten units, which is that's the two and a half acres on the back for residential. Um, physical, so there proposed to be ten units, like, like this and said, that's a quarter day.
Well, yeah, and what if we don't like the quarter of an acre?
So what would, what would we recommend? In lieu of a quarter acre, a quarter. Acres, so they'd have two lots?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Well.
And, I mean, I would. Maybe meeting in the middle, you know, like a twenty-one five, like the current residential standards, maybe a better, maybe like a twenty-one five. So a vertical nature.
I like.
Or that's, that's. Yeah.
I like, I like three thousand. For thirty thousand, three, four, like, yeah.
So how, how many units per acre would that be?
It's a two point four to a.
We're supposed to, that depends on. What else goes on there, you know, it's on the way, roads, but I would, if, if, if you're talking about four point seven acres.
Though it's only two point five.
Roosevelt, where, where are we getting this? Yeah.
I think that's up at the beginning of the PD, right?
Okay.
Yeah, it's in section two point.
Two point O. I would like to also note that, um, for phase one, it says intended for commercial use, that does not mean that they may use commercial use, it's intended. So. When looking at the density, it may be best to look at the entire density of the entire PD, not just the residential, because that section is intended. Because they must. Specifically that little part and how many acres are going to be each commercial versus residential, is that even? Yeah, there hasn't been a proposal of plans, so the plan development document covers totally, so.
Which is. Classic of the PD, but it's also what every developer wants, which is maximum flexibility.
Yeah, maximum.
Plan, get our maximum flexibility.
So if we said something to the effect of thirty thousand. Square feet per residential acre. Might just make the whole thing larger and more commercial and then we would not be getting all the one. Ish. Alright, or we can say thirty thousand square feet per residential acre. And then we can also put a simulation on the. Commercial acreage.
Well, I do think. Well, I do think. Even though I see what y'all are saying about it, front intended for commercial, I think section twelve point O. Limits it to ten units, no matter what. I would say that's the whole. So I think if we would say, we can set recommend a minimum lot area, whether it's half acre, thirty thousand square feet. And still have that ten unit maximum, that they, they could reach tens if we have a lot, a little, a minimum lot size of. Twenty or thirty thousand square feet.
Give up their commercial.
Unless they give up their commercial and then they can get up.
Or some either choose between housing or commercial.
Well, I don't think so. I mean, two and a half acres, he, if it's. Well, if we did half acre minimum lot size, I mean theoretically they could build. You know, four or five lots.
That their plans would have to have in order to qualify for like a PD, that their plans would have to have some sort of mixed use component. Now, people play fast and loose with the rules, say, oh, we got a mailbox in there, or there's gonna be an office in one of the houses, but that's. I think real close.
That's a good point, and that should be one of our recommendations. Maybe there's a, maybe a certain percentage has to be used for commercial and maybe the. One has to be built before the other, or I don't know what. We need some sort of trigger to make sure that. The commercial happens, or, or that the two uses happen.
Confused about something here. This memo. It says that. The commercial portion has already been sold.
That's a different staff report. That's referring to the Babelco property that we looked at last week, last month.
Oh, one's oh two nine and the other's two, two, two nine zero.
They're close, they are. I mean, that's like the state.
Alright, alright, now I'm on the right page.
But you're right, if you, like, the things you just mentioned are. Totally options, like you could have sort of a phase development where you start with the commercial and the new residential, or it's gotta be a certain percentage, but those are all. Recommendations that would be valid. I'm not, I'm not really great at math, but like, you know, when they have four point seven or some, four point seven acres. You know, of the, the total seventeen point one, like whatever that percentage equals out to, like. Well, mathematically, let's say that seven like sixty percent, but we could say like sixty percent commercial, forty percent roughly and. But like, make sure they wait for that. Um, to make sure they have the excuse and then maybe allowed. Like a ten percent exchange or five percent exchange that some of those have or something, cause there is certain flexibilities at play. And times, things do change, so. Um, let's keep talking. Yeah, if you, if you have, yeah, like, I like the idea of percentages and then. Then, then you can even relate that back to like, okay, we'll allow you, you have to have both, but you're allowed to change a little bit in the middle. Um, like, just in case, but. Keeping. Keeping the max of ten units on there, you know, you can kind of, because like, if, like, for example. If we increase the lot size, they may want to eat more, they may want to eat more to their commercial. To get the lots to make this development pencil on their side. So like, it's like, we're not taking their way. We get very bigger lots. They still get the six, or whatever, maybe six units or whatever they can build on there depending. Um, again, that's not my strong suit. And then they may even build a little commercial and, you know, that's what, so like, that's kind of. Maybe more, more on that, if that makes sense.
Well, the math that you have not. There's weapons, but by set property. And so they're not gonna put. If they've got, you know, one or two extra residential lots, they're not gonna put it on the seventeen side or the weapons. I don't think, so I think we'd be safe to use that permitting that same. That front portion, whatever the percentages of the acre has to be commercial. And. But that has to be residential.
And to um, to answer Dan's point where it says it's intended to be, we could take out intended. And it will be, it, it must be commercial or something to that effect.
And, and you'll note in that same section, I think they mentioned that the commercial or office would be built before the storage area or that some. Changing that to. Requiring the commercial be built for if you wish. Alright, so we wanna take. Um, I would go for one acre lots, but maybe once half acre fine, I'm not willing to go below.
Or thirty, thirty thousand square feet where we're going, and I think which would be three quarter.
To their church, yeah, because it's sixty thousand something.
What about, um, is there, is anything said here about access and how they're gonna, is there gonna be road and ride away or is there gonna be? Yeah. How, how are they gonna get these people to their lot?
Talk about curb construction. There will probably be the residential.
Yeah, um. So we wanna go with the percentages of some ability by the developer to move. Percentage from where the other residential and commercial, we wanna make the minimum size residential lot to a two thirds acre or so. Sat where we're sort of going.
There you go, and it said thirty thousand. Which is.
Yeah.
Do you want to give them the freedom to change those percentages? A- as it is now, it's written out about sixty-five percent. Commercial.
But they were counting on quarter acre lots, so now they're gonna have to make it. They're gonna have to make a decision on how much residential they actually, limited residential they want versus.
And, and where do we want them to be? More importantly, I would say because. Yeah, they lost their chance by missing advice new year, so now it's up to us, but what we've referred. Where did we fall in? I mean, I know that commercial is what is going to help our town within. Residential in terms of revenue.
Um, we already suggested fifty percent with a ten percent swap.
Yeah, but I, I think Kelly's point to that was like, there's a big, there's a weapon in between, so they're really not gonna exchange many percentages. It's gonna be really the one kind of plus seventeen is probably gonna be pro, probably commercial and the one on door roads probably gonna be, so there's not gonna be too much. Room for exchange, so I think.
Unless they were just switching and put all residential in the front and put the commercial stuff in the back, so we can. Figure a way to keep that number, and I think it does say actually something about in the front, though, front being.
Yeah.
We could leave in then.
Alright, you know, it's like sixty-five percent. I give my ten percent legally possible. And limit the residential loss of thirty, thirty dollar.
And we can say that the commercial must be between fifty-five and six, sixty-five percent.
Plus, yeah, plus minus five percent. Six percent, yeah, plus minus five percent, is that reasonable?
I, I don't know that we need to specify that. I think, I think it's a property of the sites limits. Where they're gonna put the commercial and where they're gonna put the residential, cause there's no, the wetland biceps, the whole site, if I'm, if I was looking at that correctly, and there's no, they're not gonna have an access. I don't, I don't, we wouldn't want them to have a road through the weather, right? So I think we would say. The, the portion of high ground, the front on door road is limited to commercial. Of course, the front seventeen is, I'm sorry, it's limited to residential, the portion on seventeen is limited to commercial. Um, and then there wouldn't be a mixture of the two sets.
Well, it'd still be a mixture.
They have to have a mixture.
Right, right.
I would draw my, about the ten percent exchange, I would draw that, cause that's the only thing, because of the wetland biceps inside, I just want the end.
Commercial, thirty-five for residential.
Well, the seventy-five percent was the one that, that, the language that was insisted in. Um, we've reduced that. We, I'm suggesting to reduce it to forty-five percent to go in line with the. I think the existing. Commercial district in the zoning code is forty-five, so that's where.
Is that the typical standard?
In Allendale, yes, yeah. Yeah, thirty-five percent is typical for residential and forty-five was typical for the commercial standard.
So what does that leave square feet if, if. You take commercial and instead of seventy-five percent, if you're down to thirty-five, how much?
Well, I mean, you, you trade off. Anything gravel or parking lot and stuff like that, okay, shave that, so like. You know, you don't have to, you don't cover your lot with them first, you're good, so. I mean, that's the benefit of that, right? Like you just, you don't get as much. Um, yeah.
So then what I, what I think, after what Kelly says, if we're looking at four point seven acres of commercial. There's, there's your number, if we get two point five one acres of residential, so the question is, how many lots will let them have residential? How big a lot will be? Yeah, so that's three lots.
Okay.
Four lots.
If, if they stick with that two point seven, we just.
What she's saying is that pretty much will have to, you know, otherwise.
I'm waiting for it to come up on here, so.
That's gonna be, it's gonna be hard for them to squeeze four lots in there, they, cause they still have to have access, everybody, that's shared.
It does look like all backside and some.
Yeah, but it's not our job to.
Well, if, if it's two point five one acres. Is what that space is. Beside the weapons, um, and we, we tell them thirty thousand square foot, that's three point six, so it's three. Presence is.
Because you got one of those right there as well.
Yes.
These are all good situations. As the user explained development, it's thirty-five.
Okay, so what is your understanding of what you're gonna have? Bring it from us to council, or I'm hoping someone can compose it. I've been taking.
Right, um. So that's the clearest way to do it, is kinda get all the recreational paper and.
So, you already have a lot of paper, you don't want to start working on.
Uh, I agree, I was gonna wait.
Their next, three Google computer, lights right there.
It's definitely not, and I'm proud. So what?
Yes, all of those, the, the dots, it's weapons, so there, there's not gonna, more than likely, not gonna be a road from this high ground to our road. To the.
Like this little section on the road, we think is the two point five one.
That's, yeah, that would be the two.
And with that, with that job coming, that, that's not gonna be useful.
Is, is the entire, is the seven point two acres inclusive of the weapons?
Yeah. And what did you say it was?
Four point seven, no, it's four point seven affair, but I think they mentioned in the five, five point four or something.
Yeah, it's seven point two little acres.
Oh, that, they, they mentioned actually. So I think they just put the percentage of that, so maybe that's.
What I'm trying to figure out is, is this area of high ground two and a half acres, or is it less than or equal to half acres? Cause I can't beat.
What it says is eighty-five four square feet residential building area.
How much is it?
Eighty-five. So that's like two, maybe for some of the two acres.
Eighty point five, it says eighty, eighty point five four. Square feet residential building.
Eight zero, eight, eighty square.
Oh, so that's a. One lot, eighty thousand.
So it could be put two there.
I say, so they can't use them.
What it says to you, it's a six forty acres of weapons. Overall area is seven, seven point two.
So if we told them thirty thousand, they could put two there, potentially, in the eighty thousand. But not very.
And duplex is considered.
Yeah, the other thing to remember is the weather, the new weather's important to apply to. Which has like, like seventy-five ways at that.
Seven five plus fifteen.
So this is considered a new bud once it starts tonight, or, or at county town council. So maybe we apply to our new. Wetland buffer, make sure that wasn't grand public.
Or put residential back in the lawn.
Well, we told them that commercial hasn't been on seventeen sides. Oh, yeah, yeah, so right now in this PD, this is a very important advantage picked up on us. This sets the wetland setback at thirty-five feet, which is what somebody calls or zoning marks. We should update that to be correct, if you wanna recommend that you can.
Yeah.
We do. And we can just bring it there, set to current. Right? So that could be another note for Kelly.
Okay, so we got.
I guess, I guess that goes for tree preservation as well, so. Um, you guys wanted to recommend that, you know, any tree first preservation will conform with current town stage.
That's.
And then the lighting thing as well. And you mentioned that, right?
Yeah, I'm happy, yeah, that, I, I think that's a good.
During, from the country. Maybe you should.
Well, we're related on present.
Members of the audience, if you would like to continue your conversations outside, it's difficult to hear the commissioners when we talk, thank you.
Alright. So.
Open, did you get the light? I know they got a dark sky, but there was another comment about the lighting, what was it?
It was a.
Yeah.
There was, limiting to the walk, the, the um, kelvacs. Shielded directed, and then also like the, the foot candle trespass. And I know.
There's already something in there about that, but you want more.
Just ten feet.
Yeah, okay, alright, yeah, so limit, so that thirty-five hundred, the less than two thousand.
You already have the three thousand.
So do we wanna vote on each of these? Separately?
Don't you read the words, we can say if anybody disagrees with them. Yeah, and then once we know what are listed, we can motion to accept the staff recommendation, recommended changes plus these additions.
But let's hear the changes.
Okay, so. Changes, we talked about were. Removing. Self storage facility as a permitted use. Removing the provision that allows planning commission to approve. Any uses not specifically listed, which would mean they're limited to the uses that are listed. Revise the building setback section as proposed by staff in the red line. Became my suggestion, not. Which I think is option A. Revise. The. Wetland setback to follow the new wetland ordinance. Section five to revise as proposed by staff and to also. Acquire compliance with the town's current tree ordinance. Um. Section seven, lighting to require fully shielded fixtures. To limit the correlated color temperature to three thousand kelvin or below. Section eight, signs to revise as proposed by staff in the red line. Section twelve, density revised, the previous surface coverage as proposed by staff in the red line. Remove floor area ratio as recommended by staff. And limit. Uh, minimum lot size to thirty thousand square feet. And I think the last thing was limit commercial uses to the highway seventeen side and limit the residential uses to the door road side.
Well, starting off, the first point you brought up was. No self storage units, I thought we've gotten rid of that.
No self storage units, I thought we've gotten rid of that, I thought we were gonna set storage in, because we gotta have two uses in here near PB. So we gotta have something besides.
There's a whole list of things they can do.
Right, if we're just, if we remove the self storage, they can still do offices, service, consumer repair, food sales, liquor beer, we can sell. I screamed, right?
And they have to have. Commercial and residential.
Yes.
There's the, uh, at least thirty thousand square for lot size of private commercial is granted, or just to the president. That's that's what I was understanding.
Yeah, that was my understanding too, I think.
Well, is there a harm in making that the minimum size for the building?
Well, they wanna put a. Building there, it's more than.
Why did they decide to subdivide the commercial portion? Can they do that? And then they do, what what would the lots?
They're required to have the commercial portion on the seventeen side, they have to have it, I mean, they could subdivide it, but those uses have to meet their current departments. Anyway.
Okay.
And so now they would be bound by. The lot coverage for each lot, they they subdivide it into, but they can subdivide it in the any size on and on. Marshall lot.
I I wouldn't think so, there's not a limitation here, so.
I'll put a limitation on it, probably.
Thirty thousand square feet? Let's just make that applicable to the entire block.
Well, what's the goal? I mean, if all the commercial uses are gonna be up there.
I don't know, what I can assumption was, it would be one big commercial.
Well, yeah, that's right.
Or like a, like kind of like a couple of different commercial buildings that share a parking lot. Probably taking over less space than. Four buildings along the highway seventeen, taking up and clear structures, you know, centuries, I think that's. Was probably the intention of the.
And we tell them they can't subdivide the commercial portion.
Well, that may be difficult for like ownership, for like commercial tenants, they maybe wanna own their building instead of like if this is a pro, like the problem less or.
So coverage kind of dictates a little bit of those.
Yeah, it's a. So, so we're just gonna, you would just change that to the the minimum residential lot, it is thirty thousand.
Yeah.
But then what is the minimum commercial? Does it not add to us?
What's it take for a barber shop? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah. I don't know either, I I just. They want to turn of a little buildings there, where we're talking about just a three or four large buildings would be a better use of space and more. Really, I would guess, and plenty little things poppin' in.
They gotta have something, they gotta make covers, they gotta park, they gotta.
Let's just put some of them, so it's not just. Quarter acre. Does that sound too restrictive? Put something in?
I mean, I I kinda like, I kinda like, you know, because the commercial is gonna be kind of centered off like on that lot, and I'm just gonna put the plan, let's, you know, multiple buildings, I I like. That there's, you know. It could probably fit a couple of uses on less. For under commercial use, I can share. Right? Yeah, like, and then, I mean, that's my opinion, you know, that's my.
And how would that, how would that translate into?
We would just, I mean, we we would of course, we'd the setbacks would. We would uphold the setbacks, of course, the parking requirements would dictate how the spacing of buildings, the buffer requirements. Um, other like. Parking landscape requirement, things like that, um.
So you recommend.
Maybe not parking landscape, because that's not a bug, but.
You're making, we don't put it in the law sense.
That's my, yeah, I think that would just make it more cumbersome for development, maybe undevelopable, and I don't find that maybe too extreme.
I agree with that, and and maybe we'd put a minimum of this many parking spots for commercial use, so so they wouldn't be able to just.
That's. Parking out, but the parking is just differs to the current town standard, so I think that's. All right, so we're the, for the two third acre residential lots, and we're not specifying the marching.
And I would just like to say too, in the description of the permitted uses, since. It sounds like they recommended to remove the self storage facility. From the permanent uses, also in the description, I would just state that approximately four point seven acres adjacent to US I seventeen phase one. Is intended to be developed into a commercial office building fronting the highway seventeen, striking the. Just to keep it consistent with the recommendations.
Dan, how much of this do you have? All of the.
Tell us what you got.
Uh, remove self storage, um. Not sure, that one is revise the suggested setbacks as recommended by staff. Uh, wetlands should be current to town requirements. Um, section six, I think, came next after that, and that should meet the revised by staff. Tree ordinance should meet, uh, the light temperature should be down to the less than thirty thousand Kelvin. Section eight has revised by staff, section twelve has recommended by staff, striking the floor area ratio as recommended. Um, minimum block coverage for residential thirty thousand square feet, uh, stipulating that the commercial is on seventeen and residential is on door. Was anything best. Shield, dark sky or. And the thing that you weren't sure of was that, um, Kelly had asked that we take out, uh, item B. Uh, number five, that was the one that you couldn't remember, that you could read.
I would also make one suggestion for the. Lighting color to be three thousand or less, rather than less than three thousand. That's the. Lights come in like twenty seven hundred or three thousand, so if you say less than three thousand, you're effectively pushing it down to twenty seven.
Yeah. Three thousand or below, when you, yeah, and then, um. Gavin just brought up another important, the the last sentence on number two. Has the word storage in it too, that we need to get rid of commercial office. Must be built before or in conjunction with the storage, maybe we just say commercial slash office must be built prior to residential. Yeah, I got that, would be like that.
Okay, Mr. Hardy, you have anything else I didn't have, so, okay, I don't have anything to add. Jay, not a. Kelly?
Done. I'm basically saying the recommendations and send them to the. The law, the staff recommendations.
All up there. All right.
No, Dave was the motion, who was the second for her record? Um, Jeff was the second.
And then it was unanimous, right?
Yeah, that's.
Are we having enough fun? Yeah, I know, food and wine is not something we get assertive, this is anything unfortunately, there must be a state law against me. Um, a number of things have been brought up here, and I'm just gonna make the side comment before we go on to the preservation. It is my intention, you know, once we get through the ordinances. To put together an ordinance on livability. Most towns now have that, it's everything from noise, the free roaming pets, the lights, traffic, the whole bit. And been brought up by members of the audience and so on, livability is fantastic, but first we gotta get some zoning thing done. All right, so, uh, the next quarter new business is text amendment in tree innovation ordinance. Uh, there is a new ordinance. Uh, this on the council, and one, there was one part of it that I hadn't seen and. And, um. Would like max recommendation on, because I would like the words removed, and the words are. At the end, the last there of the ordinance, it says, if trees are clear cut for. Farming or timbering, the land may not be used, development of eight years following a little old trees. I'm fine with that, but why does it has to be just farming and timbering? Any clear cutting, I believe, most of them will put oats in the cellar, yes. Can we just say? If trees are clear cut, come up the land. I think you need a zone permit to remove trees, and your zone permit is based on a development application, so you can't. At a clear cutting permit without a development application, so that effectively stops. Already with the.
Farming and tree and free harvesting are the only two ways that you would be able to quit, that's whether the only two ways.
Correct, because of state by state law, but here is, you know, you're requiring a zoning permit for tree removal, and you're basing it on development, development application. Because you'll see there's exemptions on. Uh, site configuration, house placement, GIO placing, and so. We can't like, if someone says, hey, I need a zoning permit to remove the tree, I'm gonna clear cut my lot, be like, well. Like, what are you building? Need to have, in order for the zoning administrator to make their decision, they need to understand the parameters, and you know, what, why they're removing. That's a long way of saying, you know, no clear cutting.
No clear cut, yeah.
We also have a question on the floor to discuss.
Well, with your assurance that clear cutting will not pass. Slammed. I would drop.
That was the only concern, the eighth year.
Yes, okay, we've done a good job of trees.
What really has been changed, I was having a search number. So, uh, we added a fifty dollar fee for softwood that wasn't there before, I see.
Yeah, we had the hard, hard orders reported on there.
I'm number twenty four. If I may, um, so this, uh, revision was triggered by staff just following the procedure that's listed in the current ordinance. And staff were able to identify, um, deficiencies beyond the actual intent of the ordinance to protect trees. Whereas someone could cut down a tree without a proper procedure or review process. So essentially, what the proposal is before you is restructuring of the ordinance. As it's written and as I've detailed in my staff report, um. It's broken up into two sections currently, A and B, A covers hardwoods, that identifies the hardwoods by D H inch. Which can or cannot be removed, um, and then it goes into pines and goes over those trees and what D H inch, they cannot be removed from. However, the pines give further allowances for the removal of those trees, whereas the hardwoods, that discussion is excluded. So, what this proposal does is it brings it back out, and any protected tree would have to conform to these requirements. And follow through affirming process and review process, and also further require mitigation for those upfront instead of active effect. So those things are already in place, but only as they apply to hardwoods and you just apply them to hardwoods and softwoods, do I understand that? Other way around, so they were only applied to softwoods, and now we're making sure that they are covered under.
The other issue, hardwoods, one thing. So they are now, this, this is a. Great improvement over our. On a previous situation where there's too much clear cut. All right.
I do have a question for our attorney, and this is not particularly related to this text amendment, but while we're considering text amendments, I wanted to ask the question. Um, paragraph C says protected trees may be removed by utilities, which are exempted from these regulations by state law. Is this saying that utility companies? Can remove trees if there is some state law that says that they can, or is this saying that utilities are exempt in all cases?
By state law, that's how I read it saying.
Yeah, this did. Protecting trees may be removed by utilities, that's our. Yeah, so if there is some sort of state law exemption that allows the utility to remove a tree, this one is what the law, so this ordinance would finally make state law.
Right.
It's the same as timbering and farming and utilities, they can just go in there and do what they want.
Well, I don't think that's, I don't, I don't think that's the case, I don't think that utility companies have heart launch to go in and clear cut prompt, and I just wanted to. It wasn't clear from the way this is written. What it's saying, and then, uh. I didn't want the ordinance to give the impression that utility companies could go in there and.
I I have a question, so where are we requiring?
I would change, instead of which are, I would change that to. Protecting trees may be removed by utilities, if. Um, they are exempted from these regulations by state. Having so many trees growing on that town line.
Yeah.
That is suspicious.
How are we requiring, uh, is there trees survey required for a lot or something like that in this ordinance?
Yeah, in site development, they are required to identify protected trees on their site plan.
Is that by a tree survey?
Correct. Needs to require an artist.
No, I think it should be. Well, so that should should identify the trees and put on site.
Yeah, the the arbers I meant was if there was a tree that was dead, and you're probably, you had that.
Correct, yeah, so for like a case by case scenario, if, um, an individual has a property that. There's a dead or dying oak on their property and they would like to remove it, they can apply to the town and say, hey, I'd like to remove this tree, here's why. And the town can then move forward and ensure that it's being removed properly. And with cause and not just remove just because, and staff go out and see a stump and don't know why it was removed.
I think that's the. Tree by tree basis, I'm concerned about if they need lot, a new two acre lot and put something on and. We're requiring tree survey, with all the trees identified, they're gonna be removed.
Correct. Yeah. Is it, is it saying it here, is that what you're worried it needs to say it in here?
Well, I I think it needs to be clear, I don't, I'll, in the status where it's fine, I don't see it here, but I think, I think it's important that we get that document so that. Everyone knows what is on that lot, not to fake in another's work.
Right. Does the, does the omission of the word of the requirement of tree survey to be done before then being. Get it less deep. I mean, currently, right now, that language isn't in here, and that's what we enforce or require is a tree survey to be submitted for any new construction. Maybe, but you never had some, it's not written enough. Not in my short term here, is that where you're going?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, that, I mean, I would just say like, in order to us enforce it, we need that data, so.
Yeah.
That's pretty onerous. To require anybody who wants to build on a vacant lot, how to have a tree survey?
It's 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 too much for us to say.
I I know it's standard, but that it's onerous for people who don't have the money to go out and.
You've gotta have your house. So you've gotta have your lot surveyed anyway. Wonder what the additional cost is to mark out the bigger tree.
It's it's not the survey, it's not gonna be, the surveyor that's surveying a property is not gonna be surveying trees.
When I do, when I do those, they do. No, they they're, they could just measure how big the trees are and put them in there.
They don't always get the trees right, they'll say a red or a blue to water, you know.
To typically just seeking the grand trees or whatever.
Over a certain sign. Over our rules. Over a certain sign. Yeah, because otherwise, how do you know if there wasn't the trees on there once they make a home site, right?
We haven't seen a plot submitted, but submitted yet, looked up trees like that.
But you all obviously have, because they've been. Cyclates sent in, you go, right, you you were here, and they have the trees on them.
I mean, like, it's it's either, you know, like a site plan, it really just says site plan, so, um. Like, you know, most of the time, you know, especially with these developments, they said an individual site survey for each one, uh, it could be, you know. I think. Um. Where where the site plan, if it's not, you know, not finding a note, it could just be like a sketch site plan, or we reference like, you know. For for individual lots, submit a sketch site plan showing just the. The measurement and species of the tree.
Or or we could just add the word after site, site plan denoting trees over these sizes.
Well, site plan, the survey, a few different things, typically a site name is drawn on the survey, but we do require. Our last stamp. Survey for every site, right?
Yeah, I mean, for like new construction, especially about.
Yes.
But an existing lot, and if someone were to remove a tree, require them to then get a survey to remove that tree could be a burden. I think that's the point, um, so if if. Well, this, this should cover all significant trees within the town, not just for large scale development, it should cover all of them.
Separate. For development. For homeowners who already have property.
Yeah, we can make the distinction.
Regular resident.
If you have an existing home that has a tree that may be diseased, or maybe they wanna add on or whatever, and the tree's in the way, that's a case by case, one one tree by one tree basis. New construction lot, maybe an acre, and you're putting in three thousand square foot house, and you're taking out three grand trees, somehow does it, we need to know that there's three tree, three grand trees gone.
So do we make the the determination of when you need the tree surveys slash tree site that is, when the new construction is happening?
Or I think it would be for existing lots or existing trees, and then separate it out to new construction or new development, and and do it like that, both.
Going forward, everything would be in there destructed, right? So, basically.
I mean, except for the existing. I mean, except for the existing homes and.
So. Just the whole one and twos and trees, it's not, that's a big deal, but what we're really concerned about is fifty trees comes in.
Right.
So what's the best way to make it two separate scalable items? So we don't put too much trouble on. John Smith is trying to build one house, one lot, but we also can hold it to developers to not. Can I don't see a big development in front of you without a tree survey because that's just what they do. I mean, currently, this covers both applications. And applies the same requirements to both.
It's so.
And sure.
Sure. So it. If we were to adopt this language or keep the current language, which I wouldn't recommend it. Um, adopting this new language would provide further allowances for individuals to. Not further allowances, but a proper procedure for those individuals to apply. And if the conditions listed here can't be met, require to mitigate tree loss. And require mitigation and stop instead of going out and seeing stumps and saying, well, what was the D V H here?
That's why this is coming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that doesn't get back to the point where we said to add or to not add the. A site plan showing green trees. Cause that might be as simple as somebody drawing it themselves.
So how much is what y'all come with the tree survey cost or? I'm gonna say, I want to say it's like this, this couple hundred bucks as you're building.
Typically, they're doing the whole thing, they're doing a boundary, they're doing top row, and then to throw in trees is another hundred or two hundred dollars.
Yeah, so E does say trees within the footprint of a proposed residential structure as shown on a site plan. So that, of course, applies to proposed residential structures. Some of the other ones could be seen as case by case, trees are diseased or dying, trees pose a safety hazard, uh. Prevent essential grade changes or utility installations. Um, prevent all reasonable site configurations, so you know, there's current. You know, case by case that are already included and it's not has to meet all, it's if it meets one of these, if it doesn't meet one of these, then you are required to mitigate. And it must be.
I think the only thing there is a site plan is loose, it it needs to be a tree survey. Cause a site plan can be a sketch, it's a one that can I heard saw, I didn't.
So my victory for for proposed or new. Development. I just want to make sure I have this correct. You're asking to change it to. Any new or proposed development should be tree surveyed.
Should have a tree survey.
There's there's the site survey should include trees. All protected trees.
Should you include trees for it, and that's what it's called.
So, right, but we. And and we will accept. A survey done that also includes green trees as part of its survey, not necessarily having to go out and contract with some specialty tree survey.
No. But it does say that by an RLS registered in the state of South Carolina.
Shoot.
And. And how about site plans and they have to be stamped by.
So those are, that, those are like, those are definitely laid out, like the preliminary flats, I mean, there where they call out a true survey, all that kind of stuff. And that that also be stamped in some of it all that. Here. You know, of course, I'm going out there, but I, you know, when I see, you know, like a site plan uh or something like that, I could, you know, they're requesting a zoning permit, but. You know, it could be like a good, a good sketch when you have like a, like a good idea of. You know, what what's going on or like pictures that support the location, something that's well, or put together for those existing lots, I think like. That could be, instead of going out and if you find out on a survey, I can't mark up an existing survey around. Get a new survey just so market trees could get. Under some. Um, cause we, we, last thing, we did have a case where like someone came and like took us to very good pictures and marked them up on an area and it's very clear where that tree was, so.
Yeah, I think it's just, you know, that's, that makes perfect sense.
Mm hmm.
Neither of it's written down essentially that I guess.
Yeah.
So I just want to be clear.
I think that's currently, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause it just says.
Yeah.
Let's go for just, um. I'm sorry, I interrupted. I think Matt, Matt had a point about requiring a zoning permit, just maybe adding that above, you know, any, or we're just saying like all tree.
Yeah, just so, so just to make clear, part of the reason this is coming before y'all is. This person's in A, it says no hardwood trees excluding gums and water oaks, which are twelve inches. Can be destroyed or removed. Well, somebody cut down some. Larger than twelve inch water oaks, he said, oh, I thought those were excluded. So that's part of the reason we're offending this, but I think we ought to say. No tree should be removed from a property without prior written approval by the zoning and illustrator period.
Yeah, well.
To make that, just to make that clear that you can't cut down.
No trees within these. Sizes.
Oh, no, I mean, no trees, what do you say?
No trees.
Well, if I've got a little pine tree that's six inches, so I'm not, I'm not going to ask somebody to cut it down. And we'll cut it down, it's in the way, cause it doesn't matter because it's not within these. Uh, this is not, this is my least favorite part of tree service and I'll, I'll fight all day. Is that you can't tell people that they can't cut down a tree on the property. We live in the country and this is how it works. If it's over these things that we're stating, yes, you can say that because these are the trees that need to be protected. You can't just say you can't cut down any trees in the property, that's ridiculous.
What about no, no tree is greater than twelve D V H shall be removed, prior written approval.
Well, that's which, which it is, and twenty four inch pines, that's why we put that in there as written like that. Cause if there's a twenty two inch pine tree.
But what if there's a twenty eight inch water, which was the example we.
Well, I, you could take out the gums and the water from the hardwood, hey? So just eliminating that pair, that brittleness section would solve that, right? Or no hardwood trees, which are twelve inches diameter breast height or larger, or to me, David should be struck. Couldn't we just do it by just eliminating those three words?
Why don't we add to entries, anything over twenty four inches is grand, I. Or, you know, whatever. Yeah, I like the idea of. Cutting out the excluding gums or water of a little set in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then if somebody does have a big gum tree that spells some problems, it's.
They just go to Rico and say, can I cut this thing down?
Uh, not anywhere.
What do they got against plotting?
They're just, they only live like forty, fifty years. They come down and hurt me.
Oh. Which is exactly my point about not being able to cut down a six inch pine that's on top of your bedroom.
Forty fifty years.
One last thing that I would suggest in the list of reasons that. The town may grant people legal permits, the one that says trees are within the footprint of a place residential structure are shown on site plan. I would suggest that we add a subject field to that as well. And put for infrastructure or subject field and.
Oh, I think. Yeah, I can think.
None of the reason. Excuse me, Dan.
Uh, yeah, I can run through these. So I've got in subsection A. Or striking the parenthetical that says excluding guns and water. In subsection C. We're changing it to say protected trees may be removed by utilities or striking which are and adding if exempted from these regulations by state law. And. The subsection E. We're saying trees are within the footprint of a proposed residential structure or subject field as shown on site plan. And then potentially end adding something along the lines of. Site plans for any new development shall include a tree survey depicting all existing trees.
All, all, all trees over twelve. Yeah, all trees that exceed our.
Subject.
Yeah.
And not protection trees as, as mentioned in A and B.
Right.
No five. As mentioned in A and B, we have protected trees as mentioned in A. It all protected the. All right, are we okay with this?
Yeah. Better. Actually, don't look this.
You want to make a motion to accept them as some.
Okay, I'd like a motion that we accept as some of us.
By, uh, or.
By our attorney.
Second.
All play all.
Okay.
Also, you know, it's up.
That's a waste of. Operator, that's a little plan, actually, I didn't business you, Dan.
Yes, this should be very brief, um, since I am new, I just wanted to make sure that. Um, you know, we do have an approved comprehensive plan, so I just wanted to bring to planning commission's attention if you weren't already aware. Um, with the comprehensive plan, there are a set of action items that coincide with our elements. Um, some of those action items outline the planning condition to have certain. Um, initiatives or activities, so I just wanted to put this back in y'all's forefront now that we do have an approved comprehensive plan. To uh kind of cruise this action list and see um where you might like to see these actions take place and and what.
What does the highlighting within the listing go to find?
Um, the highlighting is uh connected to different themes, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know if it's connected, I mean, it's a plan, it just the divide.
Ten elements.
Yeah, ten elements.
Oh, okay.
They're like goals and.
Yeah. So they kind of relate back.
Like the headache and then there's the action items.
Right, I got it. We spent two months doing this, we went to the comprehensive plan, it is very fresh in our mind, it was done in January, this year, in February. So that's all. And we are slowly going to review the ordinance part, which will address a number of these issues. And once we get to that, we will go first. Something, anything else you want to do? Any other questions?
No, sir, I'm ready to move on to the next, um, if you are.
What do you wish for time? All right, okay. We are now on the mission for business. Planning and zoning fee comparison, I presented the fees uh last time and brought up this discussion and our. Planner, Dan, uh, put the bid in his feet and uh. With a comparison of uh not on that pleasant, but Charleston County, that involved a dog and has some things to tell us.
I do have a um presentation with slides, but um out of an interest of time, I'd be more than happy to send those to y'all independently for you to review. Um, I don't think uh the. Adoption of new fees is time sensitive, it's something that people continue to work on. We have run over on a few items, so I'd be more than happy to send those individually or still present.
You can send it. A copy, I just personally admitted it pretty soon.
Of course. And there would still be time to get it in place before us and the council before the more attorney and guy. Yeah, essentially, yes, I mean, the, the majority of my findings really uh reside with uh several different sections, uh primarily, um. Uh zoning board of appeals, uh subdivisions and site plan review. I looked at the town of Ravenel, negative, McLeanville. Uh Charleston County, unpleasant, uh the first three were identified in our comp plan as comparable um communities. Uh on different factors, so I felt it would be benefit to kind of look at those. Overall, we do measure up pretty well with other um entities in the area. The, there are slight differences uh with the zoning board of appeals fees, but that's very minor. I think the things that we should start to consider, which may not be directly comparable between different communities. Is how their site plans are triggered and how their plan development is triggered. We, of course, look at acreage or lots, sometimes they vary between the two depending on that one. Um, that, of course, I can't display in a, in a presentation for you, I can only go over the fees. And things of that nature, but I think for the most part, the, the fees that we should really be paying attention to. Are um, you know, subdivision class, plan developments, um, or. Typical zoning permits, I think, are well within the line of other communities. I think if anything, they're higher than most. Um, I think that's. Out of nature that we don't have our own building department. Um, and then the commercial project zoning permits, that one varied a lot between different communities, it really wasn't comparable to most. Um, but we do charge higher fees than the majority of Sands, McLeanville in a certain regard. Um, and these are fees that we already have in both most of these. That's, that's correct, yeah, so the first column covers Bondon, those are all the fees that we have listed in our, um. Fee schedule, Ravenel, what I could find for them, the negative force and McLeanville, and then Charleston County, not pleasant, uh for the most part, our subdivision fees are. Pretty much the same across the board, it's just how we review the different thresholds and if we require additional. Fees for preliminary class, final class revisions therein, or any kind of amendments of that nature, which is something that we can't compare to currently because we don't have those fees.
Well, yeah. One of the things that, that um. I emphasize that parks and recreation, we don't have the fees to bash on our park. And not plus these fees are over twenty five hundred dollars, now they've got a lot more, but our park isn't going to go anywhere, but our fee to have way of putting money into it.
Yeah, I mean, it's just the one way of doing it. And planning and zoning fees typically go back to um staff time and effort that is spent on these different things, of course, all of your time is being spent whenever we're hearing a major subdivision, preliminary class. So it, it no different than a zoning variance, so the addition of a fee for a preliminary class would not be. Out of the question, um, it, it, it just, of course, goes back to uh what does the commission want to recommend to the town council? And if further um study is required for this. As much or higher as most. But where do the. Impact fees come in? I mean, this is just a fee for our administration, it seems like. Yeah, so impact fees would be slightly different, um, building impact fees at this current present time are held by the county. Through building services.
Mm hmm.
I believe, um, so until we were to have our own building services, that would be. We are required to have our own building services to implement.
Not sure, but you do, you need to have a study.
Yeah.
It needs to be based and you need to have, you know, line items and you put the impact fees and the share of your impact fee into these different. Where do they go that like are direct funding sources for like vetted improvements to facilities, cities or community facilities, so.
Sorry, they do have to be capital improvements, so they can't just be for any.
They gotta, there's all these, you gotta spend them on a certain amount of time to mine, you have like several lawyers.
Yes.
Living off of suing.
A number of those have been turned down recently. I'm, I'm success, I mean.
Work because towns have raised impact fees, but haven't spelled that but it's for. Uh, one of the business losses we will discuss next month under the plan development is uh the new language. One of the new languages put into our plan development ordinance, um, in twenty twenty three. This is an impact fee on land developers for up three thousand dollars per unit. And one of the questions I'm going to ask, we can get it next month, is how we came up with three thousand dollars and what are we going to spend it on? And not get sued. Little things like that. We're going to have a lot to talk about.
Think we also need to look at business licenses on this list. And I think the town hall would be a good comparison.
Well, for business licenses, that would actually be in the town ordinances, so that's. Would be, I don't think it would be underneath the planning. But we can recommend that to the council.
Please send it out to us and we will discuss it uh on the next meeting. Very, it shouldn't take very long. All right, um. Invested rights or we came together on vested rights, um, at the last meeting, this the three state. Newscreeps. And had two years to it and. The language is way to be. Reviewed this meeting and adopted, but it hasn't been cleared legally yet.
That's the.
Let's be ready for next meeting. Okay, there, there were a couple provisions that need revision and a couple issues that I think she brought up that I was looking into. Good, because we really need investing records, we do. That's what that so long. Okay, uh, revision is to zoning districts, we have uh the last meeting we passed, uh, parks and conservation, which are two. Uh, minimally controversial zones, um. That uh we have a language for. And it is. Uh, you folks have that language or it's, it is included in the staff report, there's an attachment.
Okay.
The black language, which you see um under the district is what's current and then the red line is stronger is what is they changed if it exists or. If it exists, yes. We don't have a parks district, but we have a park. And we have a rebuilt. Our. And you'll work hopefully by Charles. The ordinance says this district provides land for public recreation parks and community facility sites, pretty simple. And we went for that at the last uh meeting, um, is anybody have any?
Are we being presented this just to show us what we were last time in, right?
We've, yeah, the last time I'm good to see it, right?
Okay, actually.
But we approved this last meeting, yeah, there it is. I'm good. Conservation was this district is designated primarily protect and encourage the appropriate use of marshlands, forested areas, seeding areas and agricultural areas that are under legal agreement permanently. Forested areas, seating areas and agricultural areas that are under legal agreement permanently restricts development. While allowing limited private uses, this is basically per capita out of state law. We had a conservation um. Zone that said would not be developed within a reasonable period of time, which is distinctly contrary to state law. But this just brings us into compliance. So now we got a legal so. And we passed the last hot and anybody, everybody okay? It's just the same like. Alright, I would like to move for adoption of these two ordinances.
If I may, uh I'll go over my staff report briefly. So as I highlighted, uh conservation is currently a district that we have in zoning. Uh the red line language is what going to be changed, strike through is what's being deleted. And then parks, that's new, so this is all proposed language. However, um staff does recommend uh. Falling back to the current moratorium that identifies further right. Revisions are necessary to residential and commercial zoning districts, including those under the P D plan development zoning classification. Staff encouraged the commission to continue to refine and impose amendments to the zoning districts and their standards. However, neither of those districts are part of the moratorium. The planning commission should pivot its focus. Focus on those districts identified in the moratorium, excuse me. Staff recommended that the new language and standards be compiled in a larger update, which will be necessary for any rezoning efforts that this town may take on later. Uh so essentially what staff is asking that we agree on the language tonight. Put it aside and as we continue to refine and develop our new zoning districts in ordinance with the planning commission. Um that we propose those at a larger rezoning effort.
Yeah, basically, the the intention when we started this out and you folks remember that table. Which is everything from uh minimum block area density to width buffers and. Only parameters to open space, you know, various, we will not fill out any of this. Until we have all the zones, so we can make sense from one zone to the next zone to the next zone. That's that's when we intend to submit all this to council. We're pulling out planned development because of certain issues and we may send that to. Council thoroughly, but the rest, until we've done all the zones. We have no intention of sending to council. It's not a great job. We just just underestimate both. Are at least in one zones. There's no controversy on these. There are going to be controversies on some of the others.
If I may, because the current motion on the floor is to recommend for for council, that's why.
Not for council.
It just says motion to recommend for approval, so it doesn't say to defer to all of the other zoning districts, sir. So I didn't know, that's where I think staff is. Asking for clarification on the exact.
There's clarification. You don't want to send it to council.
Then I would recommend changing the motion.
Please, how would you recommend?
I would. I would recommend that uh planning commission approves the language, but. Before recommending the full recommendation to council, so wait till everything else is compatible to one complete pack.
They initially want to wait till all the all the zoning goes to council once and not little by little.
Exactly, and identify the zoning districts that are outlined in the moratorium to assist us in that process and getting the zoning code revised in a more comfortable state. And getting those done first, and then all of this can be done when we're ready.
I mean, that's a lot of work to get done before the moratoriums, but I like the idea of sending it all at once.
Unfortunately, we're not going to get it all done. So we have to do the P Ds, which is what the next is, the next. Meeting in December will be about P Ds. Because the. At as the outgoing um plan developer and our. Well, clerk has said. When that moratorium expires, there's going to be a line of plan developers outdoor of the office trying to get under the old.
Are we saying that there's not enough time for us as a council to meet once a month to do that or to to figure it out for you staff and us outside of the meetings?
So so what what I'm asking is the planning commission continue to to work on a larger effort to begin the process for a total rezoning. And that includes adding new zoning districts or amending current zoning districts. Please continue to that. That's important work. It's outlined. We should continue that, but the the focal point should be on addressing. Uh zoning districts and zoning code, which are currently deficient as outlined in the moratorium.
The ones that we wind up.
Specifically like things that like I like in our transition, like access standards. Like when when a twenty foot easement is allowed and when a street is needed, these things are very unclear in the subdivision standard. So like, that's what. And and. Uh you know, linking Daniel and I have also like done some work and trying to outlining those and bringing those to planning commission. That will help us. Not only with the plan developments, but like if you develop like, let's say just access standards or street standards, that affects. Minor subdivisions, major subdivisions, plan developments, it has a greater impact. So I think the priority is there just to make those. Things that have given me a headache for a year trying to prevent, you know. Like just, yeah.
To that point, what's what's standing in the way of us having this in place in time to prevent this onslaught? The day after the moratorium ends of getting their approvals, is it y'all's? Time available to focus on it, or is it the fact that we only meet once a month? We can meet more than once a month. I think it's important that we get this done as soon as we can before the moratorium ends because imagine all the trouble. If there's fifteen or twenty people waiting at the door, we can get it on the old rules and that's kind of defeating the whole purpose of the moratorium.
Yeah, I mean, at 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 the end of the day, you, it's not like y'all have to meet every single day to do this. The moratorium always can be extended another time. This is our second extension on it. Mount Pleasant, I think it was in place for seven years before they ultimately ended it. That's probably pushing it. Hopefully it doesn't take us seven years. Um but i- if we need more time and we're acting reasonably diligently, we can. Get more time and council, this body can recommend an extension. Council can extend it too. But you're right, if we don't have those in place in moratoriums, there will be a line.
How long is the moratorium been in place?
About it. I think next year, March.
Will be two year. So what would be reasonable to expect? We can get another year maybe?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, the the issue is you've had multiple administrators, multiple planners, a lot of changes over and y'all have been working to try to get it done as quickly as you can. But it's it's a big job. And we're not going to allow to write ordinances until the comprehensive plan was passed. So that's two months ago and we have just passed. A word, maybe not sent to council. Two or at least ten universal zones. This is going to be hard slot. But you you definitely don't want to open the gates until y'all got all of the zoning.
I didn't realize that there was the potential to extend more referring to more should council agree then. And they all get to take one. I think we should try to get as much down to four, four to can.
To that end, I'd like to request that staff put together a list of what you all see. As the most critical changes that need to happen with zoning and subdivision regulations. Either either maybe bullet list or red line zoning code, whatever makes sense to y'all. Um and then we can start to look at it. Well, y'all are the ones that look at it every day. You know the nuances, know what issues there are, and I think we can see it.
List out the most dangerous ones, the ones that are going to give us the most trouble. We're going to get to them first.
So um. Just want to confirm, was a motion made to defer this current language for further?
Or approved, but not sent to council. Transmit it to Kevin.
It's like your.
Has the motion been made?
Yes, we were discussing it with J D who um was amending this motion to follow. Motion number three, motion to approve the amended language, but defer the final recommendation to councils and further amendments to all zoning districts.
Yeah, they voted. It was exactly this.
It wasn't voted on.
Motion I second and that was.
Yeah, I heard a lot of ties. Okay, um. That basically was.
Moving to March, which is. These first two were easy. And I would like to express uh the appreciation for the Yomans work. That that uh Vico. With Carter Gianni. Uh put in uh at one day a week, trying to keep us in tune in some semblance of order.
But that I also just want to extend my gratitude and thanks to the town and the planning commission for working with me. And of course, it's a pleasure of always serve the public. As a planner that was started on the public side, I always have that in me to serve the public and. I just have a lot of confidence in Daniel and a lot of confidence in Catherine and the Tiki and this planning commission and. Of course, the city attorney. Um so yeah, believe this town to great things. So it's just been a really great budget work.
On clarification, you said you started out on the public side. Were you like the big complainer? This is so shut up.
No, I mean, I was in a planning office when I was the city planner. So thank you.
Thank you.